Well, hello again.
I tell you Ethan, this, this sound is pretty amazing when it's just between you and I or somebody else online.
Testing one, two, three.
Ah, much better.
Excellent. Good. I'll speak up.
Looks like you're using the microphones now.
How does this sound with my mask on?
You still sound far away.
Still sound.
And I'm facing. We'll get started in about two minutes.
Corey Meyer. Call your mom.
I can hear you. One more time then.
Call your mommy.
Okay, I will. We're pretty on mute. Don't call me during the meeting. We've been FaceTiming. We had a my, uh, my nephew's eighth, seventh birthday party. So it was nice to be able to all FaceTime. Didn't use Zoom for that. No, what's that? Uh, I don't know, but they're under definitely some press recently about people hijacking Zoom meetings. Okay. Yeah. You know, this does make it easier for minute taking because he had their names, right? If, uh, you know exactly who's here. Right. Sure. Sure. Okay, we have seven, oh, so 7:20. You ready? Okay, 7:30. Okay, welcome to the Monday, April 6th, 2020, meeting of the Eastland Peter Township Board of Supervisors. I do have a statement I need to read. My name is Corey Meyer and I am the chairman. I want to inform all participants that this meeting is being recorded. Due to the COVID-19 virus, this meeting is being conducted virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The township building is not open for this meeting so that all participants can observe and maintain social distancing. Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the internet or by calling in by phone. The township is expecting to utilize this vehicle for all future public meetings during and after the COVID-19 crisis. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website and we posted on the front of the township building. The township will also be recording the meeting, making it available for viewing via the township website and YouTube channel. While every effort will be made to ensure the live streaming and website are working, Eastland Peter Township takes no responsibility for and cannot help, cannot be held liable for the unavailability of live streamings in part or in full due to technical issues beyond its control. Live streams and recordings of all meetings remain the property of Eastland Peter Township and are protected by copyright. Access to live streams and recordings of meetings are provided for personal and non-commercial use. Video, images, and audio must not be altered, reproduced, or republished without permission of Eastland Peter Township. Joining me in the meeting while observing social distance, Vice Chair John Blowers and Supervisor Glenn Everly, Township Manager Ralph Hutchison, and Zoning Officer Tara Hitchens. On the, on the Zoom, we have Supervisor Dave Buckwalter. Dave, you can hear me.
I can.
Great. And Supervisor Ethan Demme. We do have a few guests which will be muted and will unmute as needed. For those four members joining via Zoom, uh, we've confirmed that you can hear us. That's great. And if you can stay on mute, well, again, we'll unmute you as, as necessary or you can unmute yourself. All votes will be taken by roll call so they can be properly recorded. In order to accommodate public comments in the meeting, township will be accepting public comment in the following ways. We have written comments. Those comments, participants may drop off their comments in the drop box located between the entrance doors of the township building. All written comments must include your name and address, just as would be required if you're appearing in person. To ensure timely receipt for the meeting, written comments must be dropped off at least four hours prior to start of the public meeting to be addressed by the board. These comments will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the meeting. Please note, any public comments received which are deemed to be inappropriate will not be read. Also, you can send comments via email. Public comments, public participants may submit comments and questions via email using the address publiccomments@eltwp.org. I know that link is actually on the website as well. All such comments and questions must include your name and address, just as would be required if you were appearing in person at the appropriate times during the meeting, during the public comment section or prior to board votes. I will pause the meeting in order to determine if there are public comments or questions to be read into the record. On Zoom, you can click, uh, under more where you see the other participants' names and you can raise your hand. Since there's not many of you, if you do have a public comment, if you just want to physically wave your hand and we'll look up to the screen and then we'll unmute you and you can ask the comment or you can also send via email to that address. We'll pause for you to do it either way. And, uh, so after you, the comments we read into record, if you sent the, send it via email, if so, uh, if they'll then be read into the record, please note however that any comments received which are deemed to be inappropriate will not be read. We'll now proceed with the meeting agenda. Thank you Hutch for these instructions. Great job. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number three on the agenda, we have an announcement of executive session on March 20th, 2020, and that was related to potential litigation. Number four, we have public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment from our visitors? Okay, any public comment that came in via email? Okay, we'll move on and we will provide public comment for any motion that we make that comes in front of the board. Okay, we have the consent agenda, gentlemen. We have actually four items. There's a fourth item which will be D, which I will read off, which you should have in your, your packet. Uh, the first, 5A, is approval of the minutes of the Monday, March 16th, 2020 regular meeting. B, we have approval to pay invoices from all funds. It's a total of $513,542.73. There are three items of note. $12,140.32 to Aquaflow Pump and Supply for grinder equipment and controls for the fertility pumping station. $5,265 to BEI Holdings, Holding Incorporated for interview room recording equipment. $19,122.83 to Whitmer Safety Group for firearms and ammunition. C, we have request for financial security reduction, Byler 338, Beachdale Road Township Engineer has inspected the site and is recommending a $0 reduction at this time. Additional work is needed to complete all the required improvements. And then lastly, uh, just came in today, we have the five Strasburg Pike car wash that we've been talking about for some time, Turkey Hill. They are granting the township and reviewers a 60-day extension to the recording period. So that will be D. Okay, so I have those items. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved by John.
Second.
Second by Glenn. Any comments from the board?
Yes, uh, what did we approve for the car wash? It seemed like last year we gave them a final approval. We were in a big rush to get started. Now there's still nothing happening. Well, what did we approve the last time?
A time extension was, uh, what was it? Has been the only thing that you've been packing on for quite a while. I forget how long that was. It was probably at least 90 days, so.
The owners changed too during that time. Okay. Right, under the former owners and, right. There, I saw a real estate transaction too in the paper this past Sunday or maybe last Sunday related to the property or maybe the property to the south. Maybe that, okay, yeah.
It does appear that they're getting closer and the main problem right now is trying to get people together to have settlements and that sort of thing. So they're hoping that 60 days gets us out of this crisis period and they can finalize everything from this to be done. So.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion was made and second, any other comments from the board first? Public? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Blowers.
Aye.
Glenn Everly.
Aye.
Aye. Dave Buckwalter.
Aye.
Ethan Demme.
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, six, we have old business. We have resolution A regarding sewer planning module. Hi Associates, Zook, Yoder, Ash, Ben Franklin Boulevard. Hutch, do you want to give us background on that one?
I guess, um, this was processed by applicant group, the exemption process to the process that way. DEP kicked it back, basically. As we had heard from prior application, they've decided that the sewer treatment plant is not within the clean streams law. It's upon a consent agreement that was entered into between DEP and the city back in 2017. So now they're making everybody do full blown pipe modules. And so that's what this is now. It's been kicked back through the exemption process. They're in process of a full length module to see the proof.
Okay, do you have any idea how much extra cost that involves having to do this process?
I don't. I'm, I'm sure it's several thousand dollars. And, you know, at least 60 days of time.
It sounds like every project that comes in has to do this now. Is that correct?
Anything that's tributary to the city's sewer treatment.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'll accept the motion for this resolution regarding the sewer planning module.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Glenn, second by John. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Any emails that came in? Okay, I'll take a voice vote on this. I'll start with John Blowers.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Aye from Glenn. Dave?
Aye.
Okay, Ethan? We heard you. You said aye. We see it. Aye for the chair. Motion passes. Thank you. Six B, uh, just an announcement. I had the opportunity to swear in Officer Morrow on March 18th, 2020. We had a nice private ceremony with, uh, family members. Very, it was quaint, right? Usually we have 50 people in the room, but with the circumstances, I think they understood. But it was very, very nice to have her and I know she started a couple, like a week after, right?
Uh, it was talked on Monday, the 23rd.
Right. Good, great. And she's in training for a couple, a couple of months.
She'll be going right along and training for several months.
Good, great. It's great to do that. Okay, we have C, announce availability of online survey regarding the Bridgeport Mobility Plan.
This was actually in today's LMP. There's an article about it, but the survey is, is up. You can get to it through the township website or through the county planning commission website. County Planning Commission put this together. They're helping three townships that are the entire corridor of Philadelphia Pike from Bridgeport in Eastland Peter to the county line in Salisbury Township. So they're seeking public input on this planning effort for the corridor and, uh, make everybody to jump on and provide their input.
You're, you're quick today. You jumped ahead to D, Bridgeport Mobility Plan. Tara, Tara is Tara calling, yeah. I, I will say, we'll, we'll jump to D real quickly. I did take the survey. Don't you like being corrected? I did take the survey for, uh, the old Philadelphia Pike, um, and, uh, very quick, easy, but, uh, definitely asked you some, some difficult questions. And the cool thing is at the end of the survey, you actually get to see the results, to see where you compare to what others feel. Yeah, right. And it looked like maybe about 120 people so far had taken it when I had taken it. So, um, yeah, really neat.
That's great. It's all been up since the first.
Right, yeah, yeah. Oh, you know what? I'm gonna stay on D because I, I believe, Marlon, are you, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
I, I knew you were interested in, in the old Philadelphia Pike corridor, um, plan. Did you have a chance to take the survey?
I did it and I, I must have been one of the early ones because there wasn't, uh, that many respondents. But, uh, yeah, I will be very interested in following and seeing where, what, how people prioritize, uh, the, the various components.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming like other things, we've had the public, we have had public input sessions like Bridgeport where we had, you know, down a hack. We have, we had an event that was supposed to be planned or supposed to happen in March. I'm assuming there'll be opportunities for the public to, um, be involved along the process. So, Marlon, we'll, we'll, we'll get you involved. Any other comments on D for the survey? And Lynn, thank you to Lynx Newspapers for, uh, getting an article out there about it.
Oh yeah, no problem.
Uh, so we'll jump back to C, Bridgeport Mobility Plan. Sure.
Yes, there, there was a file public presentation to be done in early April, which had been canceled. That'll be rescheduled, I think, so, so they for that yet. That'll be rescheduled so that 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 can be presented to the public as far as regulations that are included in the plan and then, uh, before proceeding.
Great.
Thank you. Yes, the survey is still up.
Okay.
More input can be, uh, can be provided that way.
Great. Ju- just to check to Dave and Ethan, I'll, since you guys are off mute, are you able to hear Hutch when he speaks?
Uh, we can hear it. Uh, it, it is not very clear. What, what, whoever, whatever you're talking into is working well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we might have to get the other microphone out.
Okay. Do better. Yeah, that's fine. I'll, if you don't hear, show me a sign and I'll repeat. Okay. Any comments for C or D from board members? Okay, any other comments from the public about C or D, even though we're not taking a vote? Okay, um, we have E, announced postponement of Devon Creek Conditional Use Hearing. We had conditional use hearing set for Wednesday, April 8th. It was advertised and posted. However, due to the, the crisis, uh, applicant has provided a time extension for township action. The hearing is therefore being postponed. New advertising and posting will be done when a new date has been selected. Look at the township calendar for, for scheduling information. Great. F, online presentation of the Elsa Meeting on April 8th, 2020. So Eastland Peter Sewer Authority will hold a regular April meeting via Zoom on Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, beginning at 4:00 PM. Access to live stream meetings can be found through the township's website calendar.
G. Yes. Before you go further, do you require action on item E? To accept that extension?
Okay, yeah, well, so we'll, thank you. Thank you, Dave. We, we will, I will accept the motion to accept the postponement of the Devon Creek Conditional Use Hearing to a, a certain date in the future that's.
I'll, I'll move. I'll move that we accept it.
Thank you. Motion made by Dave.
Second.
Second by Ethan. First time we had a motion made in second by a, a virtual crew. Any other comments on Devon's Creek? Is it Devon Creek or Devon's Creek? Devon, is it Devon? Devon Creek? Okay. Seeing no other further comments, I'll do a voice, uh, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Aye, Chair, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Also, announcement postponement of, uh, G zoning hearing board meeting. All hearings would have, uh, which would have been held on April 9th or April 23rd have been postponed. Information on rescheduling these hearings will be provided through the township website. No motion for that. We're good. Okay. H, cancellation of the Plan, Planning Commission meeting. April Planning Commission meeting scheduled for April 14th has been canceled. Next regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting is planned for May 12th, 2020. Any changes to the schedule will be noted on the township's website calendar. Lastly, we have I, Special Emergency Service, uh, Service Committee meeting to be held on April 16th, 2020. Lafayette Fire Company is looking to get an apparatus purchased. So to meet the deadline from the manufacturer, the ESC, Emergency Service Committee will be holding a special meeting using Zoom on April 16th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM. And then, once that proposal is made, it would come to the board if, if they approve.
Yes, just, uh, I'm still waiting to hear back from some committee members.
Okay.
We don't quite have a warrant indicated.
Okay.
Remember, you should look for.
Yeah. Okay, great. Those meetings are open to the public. That will be listed on the website, I'm assuming, as well. Okay, great. That is all of our old business. Under new business, we have none. Uh, under eight action items, we have a few. We have H, A, Renew, Continue Declaration of Disaster Emergency. I know, um, a few meetings, our last meeting, we, we we did, uh, create a declaration of disaster emergency. Hutch, do you want to give an update on that?
Sure. Um, there's nothing wrong with the declaration of the last meeting. Just didn't have, uh, a date on or a time, a duration for the disaster. And that, that is something that is in the law. Um, so it was suggested that the board do another one, which many other municipalities in the county are doing to renew it, continue it, uh, for a specific time period. I have about 90 days, uh, in the declaration, but it could be something shorter than that if you prefer. Don't know exactly how long it's gonna go on.
Right.
This way it has a duration on it, if you comply with the law, and it would start at 90 days back from the 16th, from when you took the original launch.
Okay.
And is that something that can be lifted quicker if, if it's not needed for that time?
It can be, that's correct.
Yep. Okay, so currently on the table, 90 days to, for the designation, back to the original date of March 16th.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, um, I'll, I'll accept the, a motion.
A motion that we, uh, continue the declaration of disaster emergency for 90 days, beginning with the initial resolution, which was on what day?
March 16th.
March 16th, 90 days for March 16th.
Okay, motion was made.
Second.
Second by Glenn. Any other comments about, from the board first? Any comments from the public? Okay, take a voice vote. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Glenn? Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. B, we have a resolution regarding designation of agent for disaster emergencies.
Yeah, so, uh, this form is sort of the first form in the process of potentially seeking reimbursements for costs associated with responding to the disaster. They require, P I should say, requires that the agents be designated an agent. And, uh, so I filled this out for that purpose. I put myself in as that person who would be responsible, gather all that information and submit an appropriate conference. Uh, if you want somebody else to be in there, that's fine. But, uh, that's the way I prepared for your consideration.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Accept a motion?
Do you have any motion that, uh, we, uh, adopt a resolution, uh, designating Ralph Hutchison, the township manager, as the, uh, agent, I guess, the agent resolution?
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second by Glenn. Any other comments from the board?
How does this differ from the gentleman that we're here?
EMC.
Yeah.
Emergency Management Coordinators.
Yeah, does that, is this in addition to that or what's their role in all this?
It's just different. Their, their role is more of, uh, helping with the response to gather resources and help the township with any resources that would be necessary to respond to the disaster. This has more to do with, you know, as we would purchase materials or services, gathering up those costs and being the person who's responsible to then submit those costs for reimbursement to the Pennsylvania, through the county, to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management agents.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in the board comments? Comments from public? Okay, I'll take a voice vote for the designation of agent for disaster emergency. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We have C, action to ratify policy regarding EPSLA and EFMLEA effective April 1st, 2020.
Yes, the town government passed these new laws again to help with the response to pandemic. It did provide certain additional employee benefits. And so when we were to respond to that, we were required to post notice of these additional benefits in our buildings. And we felt it was prudent to also prepare a policy that would go along with it to indicate how we would actually manage those improvements, those benefit improvements. These are temporary benefits, so it became effective April 1st, and they expire December 31st. And so both the poster and the policy that was prepared indicate that they are temporary in that way. So we were looking, I was looking for the board to review it, and if you're comfortable with it, to ratify that policy so that it's clear that that's how we manage those. Does anybody have clarity or understanding about the application of these or when these kick in? If a state is ordered to stay at home, is that the same as an isolation event, isolation workers in management? Ethan, do you have, do you have any clarity on that?
A stay-at-home order, in my understanding, does not mean an isolation event. Isolation is when you have come in contact with someone who has the coronavirus, and you are in isolation to verify that you don't have any symptoms. So that would be an isolation event. Quarantine is when you have it or been in very, you're exhibiting some symptoms.
Okay. No, that's about what I've been hearing as well, too. So I think it's a similar thing. All right, thank you.
And this is, cover all employees in the township, or does anyone?
It covers any employees who are covered by the law.
Okay.
The law does say that they exclude police officers.
Okay.
So they are not covered by the law.
Okay.
That is provided by the law or policy.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? We don't have a motion yet, but I'm fine taking any other questions prior. Okay. We'll take a motion, then we'll open up for public comment.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution or policy in reference to the EPSLA and EFMA, BA, effective 4/1/2020.
Okay, motion was made.
Second.
Second by Glenn. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay. I'll do a voice vote. Roll call.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have a resolution regarding extension of 2020 real estate tax base period to November 30th.
That's.
The current, okay. Why don't you tell us a little more?
So we received communication from the county treasurer indicating that the county, the council of the county commissioners are looking to change the real estate tax collection arrangements for 2020 because of the pandemic. So the normal arrangement has always been that the discount period is, it goes through the end of April.
Right.
Everybody gets a 2% discount if they pay it by the end of April.
Yep.
Then there's a base period where you pay the actual face amount on your tax bill by the end of June. And then after June, July, going through the end of the year, you pay a penalty of 10%, and you pay it during those periods of time. And so what's being proposed is an extension of the base period where the penalty wouldn't apply to payments after June 30th, until November 30th, at this point in time, is what's proposed. It was originally suggested to December 31st. So the county's putting in the energy and effort to try and get all 60 municipalities in the county to adopt a similar resolution to extend that base period for people to pay their taxes. The discount period would change, so you only get the discount if you pay by the end of April.
Right.
But then, you know, penalty, you pay after June 30th until November 30th.
Right.
Or some of the dates that's been due by everybody.
Yep.
There is a resolution that was prepared that would accomplish that if the board wants to go along with that also.
So if one municipality or more doesn't agree, the county can't move forward, or is it just logistics of having, you know, for X township, they get a bill that says June 30th?
Well, I don't think there's going to be any redistribution of bills.
Okay.
It's just going to be.
Penalties are assessed or not assessed, or?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
If you're paying from then after June 30th.
Yeah, and you're in this township. Yeah. Okay.
There certainly is a practical logistical.
Yep.
Dilemma if you don't have everybody involved.
Yep.
Whether they can legally go through with it, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, okay.
Are we going with November or December?
With everyone on the board, I would suggest in November as a preference, from my perspective, it would give us a little better chance of getting all of the taxes in before the end of the year, so it could be counted as current year taxes in the current year budget. Probably doesn't make a huge difference in the long term if it comes in 21, it becomes a you know, a counting issue and a reporting issue, and. It would be nice to get that cleaned up as much as possible.
Makes sense, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to extend the 2020 real estate tax base period to November 31st of 20.
Second.
There's 30 days in November or 31?
There's 30.
There's 30.
30.
So November 30th.
November 30th.
Awesome. Made? You said second?
I second.
Oh, you second. Okay. John, second. Glenn? Any other comments from the board? Okay, public? Okay. Take a voice vote. John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Although I didn't include it specifically on the agenda, there was another proposal put forth by the treasurer to petition the court to stay, delay the 2020 upset tax sales.
Yes.
And so I apologize for missing that on the agenda, but it was sort of all part of what she was proposing. So what this would mean is that the length of taxes that have been turned over to the tax claim and are going into the process of being put up for sale. Right now, the schedule has those up for sale in September. Typically, what happens is throughout the year, there are notices that go out, and so payments will come in, and that illicit properties will shrink.
Yeah.
But she's, I don't know, but this one is urgent because the courts are closed effectively at this point, so they're not going to take up anything like this anyway. But if the board would want to take this up now or the future reading, that's pretty much what it's about.
That doesn't need a consent across all municipalities, or are they looking for consent across?
They are, they are looking for everybody, the way they sent it out, they're looking for a sign on to it. But I imagine the board's going to parse that out, that they have listed by township.
Right, right.
Ralph?
Go ahead.
Ralph, if I read Amber's email, I thought it was Amber's, we're really only talking about $56,000 worth of appraised value. Is that correct?
It's about $56,000 of tax revenue that's.
Tax revenue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so I think the question is, do we want to handle it now, or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
And what is the urgency if it's not till September?
You know, it would give those property owners some, essentially another year to recover economically and, you know, be able to pay their back taxes over a longer period of time, I suppose. That's, that's how I understand it.
I guess I'm a little too bullheaded, but, I mean, this is something that happened long before the virus showed up, so why are they showing any mercy now?
You know, the accumulation of their, the length of the taxes certainly did happen in prior years. That's, that's why they'd be on the list now.
Right. I'd say it's a little of.
Yeah, my feeling at this point is hold off. Let's see what some of the other townships do, and we have time. So, okay. Anyone care to make a motion, or it will die without a motion? Okay, let's move on. Award of bid for sale of pickup truck.
So we replaced one of the oldest pickup trucks, and the one that was replaced is a 2000 GMC with a snow pile on it. Put it on the municipal website, and we got a high bid of $4,600. Just do feel this is fair, and so we recommend we accept that.
Okay, so moved by Glenn.
Second.
Second by John. Any comment from the board members? Other than a great deal. Anything from the public? Okay.
That was Glenn made the motion.
Glenn made the motion, John second. We'll do a voice vote. John?
Aye.
Aye. Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Great job getting that sold. Okay, resolution regarding traffic signal permit application, Schrasberg Pike and Millport Road.
So this is for the Free My Go project that the board applied for, and was granted the PENDOT on the sport. We have to go through the PENDOT process of amending the traffic signal permit allocation. So our traffic engineer prepared that signal permit amendment in order to put that before PENDOT, before we ask the town for a resolution authorizing it to be submitted, so that's what this resolution would be.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Dave. Second.
I'll second it, I was waiting.
Oh yeah, I'm like, this is going to die on the second? I'll give this to Glenn. I mean, four of us live within, you know, half a mile. It's better pass.
Corey.
Glenn drives by. Okay.
Corey, before we move on, you and I are going to have to change our driving habits, though.
I, I hear you. I hear you. Okay. Any other comment? Yeah. Okay. Any other comments from the public? I'm so excited about this. I'll do a voice vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Great. Request for a letter of support for grant application, City Lancaster. This is pretty cool, too.
Yeah, so we received this request just late last week. They're, they're planning to submit a grant application to the DCNR to develop a master site development plan for the Osso de Palma Park and Water Works site that are adjacent to each other. And they're looking for support for that grant application from Eastside Peter. They indicated that they'd like to have Eastside Peter Township representative serve on the steering committee that will help guide that plan.
Great.
So they actually prepared, tweaked the letter a little bit, but they essentially gave their letter. So if you're comfortable with it, you can go out and your core signature.
Excellent. Well, I was going to say, any thought, maybe a park ward member, or are you looking?
Whatever, whatever the board.
Yeah.
I thought it would be somebody who can attend.
Yeah.
Typically, these meetings are going to be daytime things, so somebody who would be available and do that. Park ward members.
Yeah.
I mean, Jim Everpark lived in the city for many years.
Yeah.
And he's not a park ward. I, I have a talk with him.
Yeah.
Yeah, the location is, is kind of unique.
Yeah.
Because it's.
There's not much.
Not really in the city. I mean, they're making it more accessible with the trail system that's going to come out through there.
Right.
But it's, it's kind of really a shared asset amongst us. Is it still called Park Morris Drive? To the best of my knowledge, and there's still a pool there. Where is the pool there? Oh, there is, yeah.
That's an underutilized.
Probably here. It's been 25 years since I've been back there. Okay. 54 acres. The two sites combined, yeah. So water was. I think they're, I think they're counting six or eight acres of the Water Works site that's part of that.
Wow. Okay, great. So looking for a motion to, to accept. Yes, yes, yes.
We made a motion that we put together and we signed, Corey signed a letter of support for this grant application in City Lancaster with, is the grant, is the grant application going to DCNR that I? Yes, that's correct. Okay, they're acting DCNR. Okay, yeah.
Great, thank you. I'll look for a second.
Second.
Second by Dave. Okay, any other comment from the board? From the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a voice, a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion passes. Great. Okay, we have manager's report, A, MS4 report.
Yeah, making a report that the district authority did meet on 19th March to get your actions on the stormwater fee project. It was basically to accept the transfer of the stormwater system from the township, entering to an agreement between the board and the township where the township will be engaged to do all the operation and maintenance of the system, as well as capital improvement to the system. And they then adopted the stormwater fee rate schedule, and then finally adopted the credit policy that would go along with the stormwater fee schedule that would encourage property owners to work with the township to reduce the impact of pollution on stormwater in the township. So that's anticipated to initially hit bills to property owners in July. And then we'll be off and running, I guess you'd say. But I just want to report that that's been the main focus that we've been working on. We have to classify that out, looking for a new stormwater coordinator, and some of that's in the process, but we're not close at this point in time, still some time away. Those are the things we've been working on. But those are the things we are going to work in this morning.
Okay. Public meetings and other considerations, pandemic response.
Sure, just a couple of things I wanted to share with you and maybe ask the board. The park board meeting would normally be the fourth Wednesday of this month. I haven't had contact with the park board chair about it yet, but I would anticipate that that would likely be canceled. The parks are still open. We've fenced off the playground equipment to hopefully keep people off of that. But I don't know that there's a whole lot to be discussing as far as parks are concerned at this point. There is the CBA region planning effort trying to wrap up, so perhaps if they're in a meeting, they'll be able to finally do a final review, get a recommended option in that. So those are the things that are happening there. As you mentioned earlier, the municipal service committee is looking to meet on the 16th. The purpose, as you said, would be to hear the proposal from Lafayette Fire Company on acquisition of new fire apparatus and make recommendations for the board to come to do that at that time. The proposal is, you know, purchase of just under $600,000 and about $360,000 of that would be township dollars. So their plan and the reason for meeting on the 16th would be to hopefully get a recommendation from the committee at that time and then come to the board meeting on the 20th to make a similar presentation and get board action. Just want to mention, you know, the township code requires one meeting a month. The next regular meeting will be Monday, the 20th, so it's entirely up to the board. Now we have this tool that's available to us. As long as the board is still comfortable and moving forward in this way, it's going to be a meeting again. And it works good.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
The next meeting after that would be Monday, the 18th of May, the only one scheduled in May.
Okay.
Just a quick commercial. Let me ask everybody to not flush flushable wipes because they're not. They really wreak havoc in our pumping stations and create problems in the system, so. Glenn, if you could get people to not flush flushable wipes, so-called flushable wipes, that would be a big help to us. There seems to be a lot more coming into the system under current conditions than used to be.
Right. People are Clorox, the Clorox wipes, people are using those and they bought them all at Walmart, Target, so now flushing them. One of the other municipalities just posted on social media showing it clogging up their, their grinder.
We, I don't know if it was that picture, but we got a picture of something similar, but I'm getting newsletter coming out.
Yeah. Good. Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't. Yeah, never wrong. And never being used in the board.
Yeah.
The usual quarterly sewer billing is issued on April 1st and the payment terms are normally 30 days. I did want to ask the board if you want to consider extending the payment terms to allow payment without penalty or interest under the current conditions. Paid by the next quarterly bill, what I would suggest if you wanted to do something like that. A lot of other utilities, making some exceptions to be recorded down, landlord's making exceptions.
Is that under our jurisdiction or the sewer authority?
Actually, the township.
Okay.
For jurisdiction, Rob, Kate, which was the least.
Yeah.
To generate funds.
Okay.
Corey, Corey, I don't know if Ethan picked up the discussion exactly what Ralph was talking about, extending due dates for payments or?
Yeah, for, so the, the usual quarterly sewer bills issued for April 1st, it gives it 30 days, so it's due by April 30th, right? I think I just paid it today. The, the question on the table is, would we consider extending the payment terms to allow payment without penalty or interest charges? The bill's paid by July 1st, so an additional, how many days?
60.
Days or so. Yeah. You know, the issue then is then there's another bill due at that point and that's another 30 days. You know, I mean, I, you know, my bill's $95 for residential, would this also apply to commercial units as well?
It would, you have to do it in uniform fashion.
Yeah.
You don't need to make, you don't need to do it at all, so it's entirely up to the board, but if you want to think about it, it comes along with waiting until the next meeting or some other thing, if you prefer.
Yeah, I, I would hold off at this point. I think we'd end up with some other logistical issues and.
Okay. Prior election, they had the move to Tuesday, June 2nd. Your first meeting in June would be scheduled, it's going to be Monday, June 1st. It represents a conflict because they always set up the day before in this room, so I guess I thought that. Pass the board, what's your preferences, if you want to try to reschedule that or if you just want to have one meeting in June, which would be, you know, the third Monday, which would be the 15th instead of the first and the 15th, just the 15th? Or we could try to schedule an additional date to replace on the 1st.
I'd be okay just canceling it and just stay with the June 15th. That's fine. Dave and Ethan, you okay with just a June 15th meeting?
Sure. Sure.
Okay.
Probably could have a motion.
Okay, well, I'll accept, I'll, I'll accept the motion to cancel the June 1st meeting and only have the June 15th supervisors' meeting at 7:30.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so moved by John, second by Glenn. Any comment from board members? Any comment from the public? Take a voice vote, John?
Aye.
Aye. Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes, thank you.
That was it for me, thank you.
Great, I wanted to thank, one, I want to thank Tara and Hutch and Jeff and probably five other people for getting this set up. Well done. I'm sure you'll learn and we'll, we'll get the sound to be even better. Also, also want to thank first responders, EMS, our volunteer firefighters, police, healthcare workers. We're in, we're in for a couple more weeks or maybe even a month, month and a half more of this, so appreciate, you know, township staff and everyone else being here. Can't close government, right? We have to, that's what we're here for. So I appreciate, appreciate you guys coming as well and Dave and Ethan being on the phone or Zoom. Any other public comment? If you want to take Doug, I don't know Doug, but if you want to take Doug. Mr. Glick, if you have any comment, you're off mute.
No, I'm good. I appreciate the time and I think this worked well. The sound was probably the, the most challenging part from Hutch, but we, we worked through it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glick. Okay, any other comments from Dave or Ethan? Dave first.
I have a question. Are, are, is the public able to see the meeting, hear the meeting without being on Zoom?
They can call in. There's a phone number that was on the website next to the link where you can do a voice only.
Okay.
So they are able, but we did not have anyone join.
No video.
On there.
Chairman? I was, I was practicing it, so it is streaming on my Facebook page.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. How many views do I have?
We only got three at most at the peak, but then it'll be saved there as well.
Okay, awesome. Good to hear.
I can show staff.
Any other comments? Thank you. Thanks, Ethan. Any other comments? John? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn from Glenn, second from John?
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, all those, oh, let me do, John? Aye.
Oh, aye. Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Motion passes, thank you so much. Have a great day, thank you.
Bye. See ya.